Good evening, everyone. I want to call the meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee on Wednesday, May 12, 2021. And I want to say that, first of all, before we start this meeting, what a great feeling it is to be back here. And it seems like we were the three women that were fighting to get back live. And it happens to be at the first meeting, Finance. So I'm glad that we're back here. It feels good. And no more of this Zoom. So with that being said, Ms. Brown said she was going to be the clerk now. And if she can call the role, please?
Certainly. Paula Johnson?
Present.
Dottie Oden?
Here.
And Jessica Brown is here.
Thank you. It is, I'm going to round it to 5:15 again on Wednesday. Okay. So, Mr. Donovan, the SURF purchases. Do we want to talk about that first?
Yes, that's, Mr. Smith is here to discuss that. So I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you. So the city, as you probably know, has a capital improvement and reserve fund, which allows us to purchase new vehicles in a timely manner. We tend to get our money's worth of our vehicles. And by the time we retire them, they are ready to retire. So we're looking to replace three vehicles tonight. So the process is you approve it, obviously goes to the full Board of Ed, and I take it to the automatic Finance Committee, which is early June. Then they approve it. I think it goes to the full Alderman for final approval. And in some cases, we'll get a vehicle a year from now, just because it's a backlog. They're waiting for chips in some cases. But we'll get them when we get them. So we're replacing three vehicles. One is a Ford Taurus. It was 2004. For those of you that have been with the district for a while, that used to be the Joe Giuliano's vehicle when he was superintendent.
Wow.
So we definitely got our money's worth out of that. It has only 51,000 miles on it, but those are all city miles. It's seen much better days. We're starting to have to put more and more money into it. The second vehicle we're replacing is the food service box van that has over 100,000 miles. And also, repair costs are starting to go up. And the third vehicle is a Chevy cargo van, which is used by one of our electricians. Has 80, almost 85,000 miles. So all of those, typically, we look for, my program, in eight years for a replacement cycle for our vehicles. So you can see, all these are beyond that. So the other thing we do is when we, quote, retire these vehicles, I still leave them in my lot for a year. And they've served as backup vehicles. So if some van breaks down and has to go out for repairs, then the tradesman has another vehicle to use. And I bring in summer grounds people for the summer that gives them, gives them a vehicle to get around and do things. So these will be put off to the side, but we're not getting rid of them yet. What we are getting rid of are two vehicles that were replaced the prior year. And so we're actually getting rid of a 2003 cargo van and a 2003 box van. And in the cover memo, I have the mileages for those and everything. I just got the trade-in cost for those. And it's not much. It's $3,000 for the two of them. So you can see, even the dealers are saying, we're taking, we're doing a favor taking these things off your hands. So to get the new vehicles, driving a Ford Taurus around town is great. It's been a good, reliable car. But I'm going to be giving the new vehicle to my trades foreman, and he's responsible to be out there when the snow removal and things like that. So I wanted him to have a four-wheel-drive vehicle, not Ford Explorer. Seems to be the right vehicle for that. So that's the first vehicle I wanted to get. I want to replace the food services box van. And then replace the electrician's cargo van. We went to three Ford, my entire fleet is Ford, with the exception of the Chevy cargo, cargo van. That's just the way it's laid out over the years. For the longest time, Gropone Ford up in Concord, I think, has had the state contract. So we took advantage of the low cost that they provided. And that's probably why we've gone with Ford, for the most part. Let's buy American, which I like to do. So we went to Gropone Ford, Londonderry Ford, and Best Ford here in Nashua. Best Ford chose not to bid on any of these. We've tried to get hold of them a number of times, and still nothing. As you see in the memo, Gropone Ford was actually the lowest bidder for all three vehicles. Londonderry chose not to bid on the Ford Transit. So I'm recommending we award the contracts to purchase the vehicles to Gropone Ford. Be a 2021 Ford Explorer in the amount of $30,110. A 2022 Ford E250 box van for $46,424. A 2021 Ford 350 Transit van for $36,655. Those, I did not provide a total in the memo, but those totaled to $113,189. That is below what was budgeted in the SURF fund, which was a little over 141,000. So we're well under budget. And the money that we don't use stays in that fund for other uses by the city. Ultimately, when we actually get invoiced, it'll be 113,189 minus the $3,000 we get in trade-in. And again, the funding mechanism is the SURF fund. Any questions?
Mrs. Oden?
Thank you. So you're trading in vehicles that, from last year, that retired?
Yes.
Okay. On the Ford Explorer, have you looked at equivalent cars? I'm thinking gas mileage. Was gas mileage considered when you were deciding which vehicle to get?
Not really. I was looking more for the utility of the vehicle in the snow, the four-wheel-drive capability. I did not, honestly, I did not look at the gas mileage.
I guess my consideration there is, so many cars today are all-wheel-drive, and there are just so many SUVs out, that I thought maybe, I don't know. I haven't looked at gas mileage. I know when we look at cars, that's one of the things I consider. But we don't have to go out in the snow either. Thank you.
Honestly, I didn't look at gas mileage at all.
Okay. Ms. Brown, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, good. Because I'm going to start my list of questions here. Okay, 2021 Ford Explorer. That's for the tradesman? Is that what it is?
No, that's for my foreman.
Foreman.
Maintenance foreman. Yep.
Maintenance foreman. Okay. Why does he need such a big vehicle as an Explorer? That's not a little SUV. That's a huge one.
Does he need a huge, well, not a huge. It's kind of a midsize SUV. Again, I was thinking more getting around the snow in the city. Heavy snow. He's probably the individual that puts the most mileage on our vehicles. Really hard to say about it.
Well, heavy snow. Hopefully, Public Works will be out there, Street Department plowing. And are you going to really fill up a vehicle that big? Again, Mrs. Oden talked about all-wheel-drive versus you're going to have the four-wheel-drive. I'm not in favor of that Explorer for $30,110. Because I was doing the calculation between Gropone Ford and Londonderry Ford. Between their prices is $180. But still, do we need a vehicle that size for the tradesmen and the maintenance foreman to drive around in the city? I mean, city miles and city gas is different than highway. You're going to burn more in the city than you will on the highway.
I don't disagree.
Okay.
I would say, yes, hopefully, our Public Works and crew is out there, snow plowing. That does not always occur. We have to be out there regardless of whether they plowed or not. I've been through, my very first winter here was two days before Christmas Eve. They expected three, two inches, three inches of snow. We had 24. We had people stranded. We had school buses stranded in the streets. To get through, could you do that with an all-wheel-drive now? I mean, didn't really have all-wheel-drives back then. Could do that with a lesser vehicle, yes.
Okay. Could I add to that? I actually tend to agree that having an four-wheel or all-wheel-drive vehicle in New England has some real value. I've been driving midsize SUVs for, of all different brands, for the last couple of decades, and I appreciate it in the snow. I was actually kind of surprised that the person in that position wouldn't have a pickup truck. Because I would also argue that there could be some situations where extra hauling capacity could be really valuable during, for, and doing those kind of maintenance things. But I don't know what kind of equipment they're hauling around, or tools and that kind of thing to do the jobs. Does that come into play a little bit?
No, because this, again, this is the, he's basically Assistant Director of Plan Operations. So he's out there directing work being done, not necessarily hauling stuff.
Okay.
In fact, he'd probably get a grievance if he did haul stuff.
Here's my argument. I drive a Nissan Rogue. I get through the snow no matter what. I have no problem with that. It's an all-wheel-drive. So it's, I'm not in favor of that. Also, the ones that you're retiring, are there any rusts or anything underneath them?
The ones that I'm trading in or the ones that I'm holding on to, but, quote, retiring?
Well, let's talk about the ones you're trading in that there's no value to.
Yep.
Is there rust underneath there?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
They would not, we could not get a sticker for them if we kept them.
Why are we not replacing, why are we not repairing the rust? We can repair the rust.
It's, we're talking about the ones we're trading in. It's body rot. It's gone beyond rust. I mean, you'd spend an awful lot of money. They're also 18 years old. They're getting tired. I mean, these are old vehicles. I like to keep my vehicles for a long time. I've got a 2009 truck at this point. It's rusting. It's a Ford as well. Engine still works pretty well. But I got to put a couple thousand bucks into it every year if I want to get an inspection sticker.
So what are we doing to get rid of not just the surface rust, the underneath rust where the salt eats it away? Are we doing anything about that?
Not really, no.
Not really?
No.
Okay. Okay. And the ones that we're replacing, other than Mr. Giuliano's car, which I know, that's been around for a long time. Right, Dottie, you and I remember him. What's the issues with them, other than mileage?
Mileage, there's some body rot going on, but it's not to the point where we can't get a sticker, should we have them renewed? They're, they're just getting very old. They're beyond their expected service life. Got a lot of mileage. I mean, it, I don't want to wait till something dies on the road to replace it. That's what I'm trying to say. It's, you replace something in a timely manner, not when it's dead. Once it's dead, then I have no vehicle for that person to use.
And I think the idea behind the SURF is we replace two or three every year or two. We don't wait until all of a sudden we need eight of them, because we certainly wouldn't have the money for all eight. So we cull out the weakest or the oldest, and then we, we bring in others.
I've got, my fleet's over 30 vehicles, so it's, yeah. We do have to make vehicles last a long time, as it is.
I just have a problem with the Explorer. I don't, I think that's more than what we need out there. That's just my opinion on it. So.
I guess what I would offer is we can go back and see what else is available. When's the Board of Ed meet, you're?
24th.
24th. Today's the 10, 12.
12.
Last 12. We can probably have something, if you're agreeable, we'll come back with a recommendation at the Board of Ed for that vehicle. Come up with, you know, a different vehicle with, we'll see what's out there that can meet our needs.
So we can make a motion to accept the two vehicles and waiting for additional information on the 2021 Ford Explorer?
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Brown, do you want to call the role?
Yes. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown votes yes, also. Motion passes unanimously.
Also, check on the gas mileage this time.
Thank you. I was going to ask that. Well, when you're doing city driving, you don't get the same mileage as on the highway.
Right.
So if we can find something, you look at the price of gas, and it just tends to be going up.
Yes, I drive a F-150, sorry.
You see.
Yep. Next item on agenda is mine as well. That's about Franklin Street. There's a memo in your package that discusses that. But so we're well into our renovations of the facility. We actually had a tour with a number of you company. We and you saw the place really before we started doing much of anything. I think we had all the, a lot of the ceiling tiles were down. So you got a sense for what was above the ceiling tiles. What was above the ceiling tiles are a lot of pipes and conduits and wiring that eventually we need to take down. A lot of it was covered with asbestos that we'll eventually need to address. But so the summer, we're just addressing the asbestos we need to. So if we're going to have to tap into a pipe for any reason at all, we're having that abated. We are abating all of the, what they call kind of a blown-in insulation that's in the boiler room. It's attached to all the beams. That's how they insulated back then. But that insulation contained asbestos. So that's kind of, and you've already approved that contract, you know, last month, I believe. So that's ongoing. We had got the architect, harriman, that approved that contract a couple of months ago, is starting to give us some prints of different parts that they are designing. This particular progress prints provide details on the two emergency egress towers. So what the Fire Marshal is requiring is that if we're going to have preschool children on the second floor, then we need to have emergency egress towers on either side of the building. Think of a higher, well, not a high-rise, but in Boston, you have good buildings that have excess, you know, egress stairs outside the building. So we're talking about the same sort of thing. I could pass this around if you wanted to look, or, maybe I'll do that. So that's, that's one of the designs that they're putting together for us. They're also designing the handicap ramp that's going to be at the main entrance. They're going to be designing the security vestibule on the very front. We are self-designing some new walls that we're putting up, new doorways. We're working with, we're getting bids on contracts for anything. So the new fire alarm system, new clock system. We're looking at new intercom system. IT is looking at all, you know, getting drops for all the new computers in every single classroom. And of course, security cameras and that sort of thing. So we're trying to put all that together. But that particular, those towers that we're talking about is something that's a little bit beyond what I want to bite off and chew and try to coordinate all that. And it's right in the wheelhouse of a construction contractor. And that's why I want to send this to Joint Special. It's exactly the same sort of work that they do. I doubt very much that that will be done for the beginning of the school year. I can almost guarantee, I mean, we, we haven't finished design yet. Once the design is finished and the construction drawings are done, it has to go to the state Fire Marshal for approval. That's all going to take some time. You've all heard, no doubt, about the cost of steel just skyrocketing. Not only is the cost of steel skyrocketing, but the backlog for getting steel is getting longer and longer and longer. That and the chips that go in your cars, which is why you buy a new car now, it takes forever to get it. So the prices, everything's sheet rock, wood, everything's gone up. So we'll talk to the Fire Marshal. They will allow us to occupy the building, have the preschool on the first floor. And we can have Brentwood on the third floor. Preschool classrooms that is on the first floor. We can have staff on the second floor for the preschool. And more or less one-on-one, maybe one-on-two type situations on the second floor. So OTPT, that sort of stuff, that any sort of specialty programs might, you know, go on the second floor. Until we get the towers, and then they can have all the classrooms they want. So based, so our tentative plan right now is to have the Broad Street preschool program move to Franklin Street for the fall semester. And we have Title I moving to Broad Street to take that place. And at some point in, between now and next summer, the towers will get built. I'm really concerned about the cost for that. And it's, I'm pretty sure it's going to exceed. I mean, this was not in our radar at all when we started this process. When we decided to purchase the building, we just never thought of anything like this. But the Fire Marshal's requiring it. So it's, it's money that we don't have, I don't think. We won't know that for sure until the work is bid out. So that's the first part of it. The second part of it is next summer, I expect to put a lot of work into the facility to upgrade the ventilation. And right now, it's a very old ventilation system. It works. It's safe. But it's a very old ventilation system. And we're hopeful that we will have the SRR2 funds, which Dan can tell you more about our efforts there, to do that work. And then we'll take care of all that. That alone, plus the additional abatement, plus any additional electrical work that's associated with the new ventilation, is all the sort of thing that general contractors work on, is a lot of coordination. So that's why I'm suggesting we just take this project. Not the work I'm doing this summer, but the rest of the project, including those towers, and send it to Joint Special.
Ms. Oden?
Thank you. Did I read somewhere where we needed two towers that had something to do with Brentwood being on the third floor to separate the primary and the secondary students?
Correct, yes. So they, they don't want teenagers running down the same set of stairs as little kids.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Ms. Brown, do you have questions?
Yeah, I had a couple. First, is the plan to have these stairs enclosed, or would they be open-air?
These plans particularly, I mean, they show them open-air. If we can make them enclosed, we have them covered.
I would just, a little bit concerned with maybe preschoolers going up and down, you know, wired stairs with big gaps. I'm sure that you guys will take care, take that into account when you make them.
Oh, so, yeah. Remember, this is just for emergency egress. So they're not going to be there for general use at any time. I would expect the very bottom would be locked, so preschoolers aren't getting in and climbing up the stairs.
Okay.
With the gate high enough so the preschoolers can't get up there.
Excellent.
Think of this as a fire escape. It's only going to be used in times of emergency. Hopefully, there won't be any emergencies. So it's just, it's a safety-fire emergency thing. It's even the Brentwood kids, it's not like they're going to come and go from school that, on using that. They'll use the regular internal stairways. We do plan on having, most of the time, Brentwood use one side, and the preschool use the other side, just to separate them in the normal course of things.
Okay. Let's see, I had two other questions. My next one was, with limiting the use of the second floor, I guess it was, or third floor, will we still have enough capacity in the building to meet our current Brentwood needs when we move the program over there?
So the Brentwood will be on the third floor, and we will meet all their needs.
Okay. And my last question was regarding, if we move this over to the JSSBC, will, are we hoping to loop this into the school improvement bonds we've already got for, like, the middle schools? Is that, or is this be, we're going to be looking for a separate?
So we have money set aside for Franklin Street. When we put together a budget, we did not put together, we didn't, the towers weren't part of the picture. I've been purposely holding off on most of the deferred maintenance spending this year because I had a feeling our estimates may be a little low in some areas. And the price of construction materials has skyrocketed. So that's kind of my safety net right now. But by sending it to the Joint Special, I think one of the things that does for us is, is they can then figure out how to come up with the money to do the work.
Okay, thank you.
Did I say that politically correctly enough? You say it differently. I don't even know. We're on air, I know, but it's.
So we bought the building. We didn't factor in that Fire Marshal would tell us to put egresses on the outside. Is that correct? And now we're stuck having to do that at an escalating cost that we don't know. And we want, we want to throw this in Joint Special School Building Committee's lap and let them figure it out. Is that kind of around the bow I'm getting?
Not the way I would put it.
No.
I wouldn't put it quite through it.
Yeah. I would have worded things differently than Mr. Smith. I think there's potential funding that we have. The main reason we want to move this to JSSBC is that's where the experts, Harvey Construction, et cetera, can work to do these towers, as Sean calls them, or I'll call them the fire escapes. We internally don't have probably the skill set we need to put in this sort of level of construction. So by moving it over to JSSBC, we'll get all the appropriate experts involved. As far as the funding thing, that can be discussed at the JSSBC too. But there's no reason to discuss the total funding because we don't even have the total cost yet. Might it be over that? Yes. Might there be some other funding solutions? Yes. But the intent of today was not to talk about necessarily the funding, but to move, we've bought the building now, we do have to do this if we're going to use the building. And I think in the long run, you know, it's, it's going to be a good investment for the school system. It's just this fire escape slash towers issue that's a little bit of a bump in the road right now.
Okay.
I don't think the Fire Marshal brought up the fire escape issue when we were talking about building the, building, or buying the building. Very, probably because we hadn't really talked about who's going to be where in that building.
Right.
The concern is teenagers on one floor and preschoolers on another. And, you know, older kids trampling the younger ones during an emergency. So it just never came up before. And then we've also been, it's been hurt because of the price of construction materials just skyrocketed. Steel's gone up 46% last I heard. So whatever budget we had before is out the window.
Motion is to accept the recommendation to request JSSBC to manage the Franklin Street renovation project.
So moved.
Second. And Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
And Jessica Brown votes yes.
Okay. So we'll move on to the CIP program report.
Okay. For those not familiar, this is a process which happens annually. We bring forward to the Board of Education. Mr. Smith usually does most of the work. He pulls together a capital improvement program, basically made up of two pieces, sort of short-term, which he calls deferred maintenance-type activities. And he lists out four to five years, typically having $600,000 to $700,000 a year for those type of activities. And then he'll have the more long-term projects, which would be a school renovation, things like that. So that, that information is shared with this board. This board approves it. We then go and meet with this group, the Capital Improvement Committee. The Capital Improvement Committee is at the city level. They meet with each one of the They meet with each one of the various departments. The departments share their requests. This committee then gets together and basically grades out the requests. And that's where, when you, if you look at page four of the handout, you'll see, okay, you know, what, how are we going to rate them? A is essential, B is desirable, C acceptable, D deferrable. So they go ahead and put together this report where they speak to each one. They tell you what the dollar amount is and how they would recommend to do it. The thing about it, they have no funding authority whatsoever. So they can list that we need every, everything could be an A, but we don't have $50 million to spend, et cetera. The thing we did differently this year, knowing that we had the middle school project going on, we didn't list any sort of long-term projects. That is our long-term project and we're in the middle of it. So we just listed certain, certain of the short-term requests. So the first one that comes up is on A, we have an A1. Or is it A2? No, the Cooler Tower at North for short-term. Yeah, I'm looking at the long-term stuff. So on page, page 14, yes. That's where you see the school, the Cooling Towers at North, and that's $150,000. So that was rated as an A1. The other two, the Track at South was rated at A2. And the project for the dehumidification at the three, for the back wings of ledge fairgrounds and Charlotte Ave was listed as an A3. So the good thing about that last item, the back wing of the, I think that, we put that in the CARES 1 and that has been approved. So we don't have to worry about that one. That's related to air quality, which relates to COVID, et cetera. So it's been approved. So Mr. Smith doesn't have to spend any deferred maintenance funds on that. And he's going to, that's a project that we're going to bid out for the architectural work and move on with that, probably over the next few months, correct?
We already awarded the contract for the. We awarded the contract for the architect already.
Oh, that's right.
Beginning the plans hopefully mid to late fall and then bid the work out this winter for work, to do the work next summer.
So I just typically, I share this report with the board. There's no motion necessary. It's just to let everyone know, this is, if you want to take a look at it, you can see that the school doesn't have lots in here. Usually we have a lot more requests, but due to the middle school project going on, we don't have too many more requests. So any, any questions regarding this?
Thank you. I know we replaced the track here at North probably four or five years ago and it had been in horrible shape. Is this, was this installed when the school was built, the track that you need to replace now, or will this be the second replacement?
It's the original track when the South High School was rebuilt in 2004.
Wow, so it served, has served many years.
Yeah, we spent a fair amount of money about the same time as we did the work at the North, just patching it. And those patches have failed. Now it's time to just start over again.
Okay, thank you. I just remember, because I used to walk this track and it was in horrible shape. And it certainly made a big difference. I think we just have to remind the city people with those big mowers to be careful.
One quick question. Do we still have the water problem here at the North Track the way we used to with the coverts? No?
We put a pump in, remember? A bunch of years ago?
Many years ago.
And it was when I was here though, so it's not like your, your old many years ago. It was probably eight or nine years ago.
Okay, because I remembered when we built the high school, we had water all over the track and it was coming from the coverts.
Yes.
When this, so now it's coming back to me. The lower football field where they practice, that's where they have all the tackling dumbers and things like that, that was actually built to be a flood plain. So when, since what Lincoln Brook overflowed its banks, it was meant to go in that site. That's the way it was designed. Not good for us, but I probably still have pictures somewhere of it flooding a few times and geese were floating around. Kind of a neat picture, but. So that's the way it was intended to work. So not, not good for us necessarily, and we did install those pumps. And so if and when it ever occurs, we'll have pumps that can remove the water quickly.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, so we're all done on the CIP program report? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the CET fabric printer. And that's you, Mr. Donovan?
Yes. This came from the Director, Dorothy Ogara. Basically, the, the marketing students have a enterprise, they call it Inc. And they market T-shirts to students at all the elementary, middle and high schools. It was a business that was doing quite well until the pandemic. They did have a previous machine that did this work, but it has expired, so to speak. So the, this, the marketing group as part of CTE would like to purchase a new fabric printer to print the T-shirts. The, the costs will come from the Perkins Grant, so it's already been approved in the grant. They would like to make the purchase from Grimco for a cost of 14, $495. And if you, when you look at the quote for Grimco, you'll notice that the cost was $16,995, but then there's a $2,500 credit, thus the 14, $495. They did get two other bids, since it's an, it's an actual Epsom printer, that's the one they would like to use. They got quotes from Epsom, two other ones. Epsom showed them two other printers that they could use, one which was $17,995 and another one which was $14,495. It's just slightly different, it's the same price. So they would like to go with Grimco to make the purchase for this, for this device.
Any questions? Ms. Brown?
No, I had one, but actually I found it. I was going to ask if it was screen printing or sublimation and it says right here that it's sublimation. So that's, was my question. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions? I'll make a motion.
Actually, you know, I have one more question. What do they do with, you said it was a pretty profitable school-based business. What do they do with the profits?
The, I think it's defined as successful. I'm not sure necessarily fully profitable. But I think they're covering their costs. They're selling the shirts to cover the costs and the students are learning how to do it. That's more what we want to do with our CTE programs as opposed to making lots of money.
Gives them good skills.
That's great.
So then this way they can carry the skills to make the money out there.
Screen printing is a great business.
Well, teaching kids to have a business and that's good. You know, so they know how to make, if they're going off to college, they can have a little business on their side and make a little bit of money. Can't hurt. Okay, they make a motion to accept the CTE fabric printer on Grimmo for the cost of $14,495. Wait a second, to be funded by the Perkins Grant. So moved?
Second. And Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown votes yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is the proposal to accept the NEF funding. Mr. Donovan?
Okay, so we've been working with the National Education Foundation for probably three to four years on this. It's sort of had a lot of stops and starts for various reasons. But recently, they, after having a few meetings with a couple of their representatives, they have donated very generously $35,000. Now, the whole idea is to create this science center. Some of their, some of their people went up to Bedford, saw what Bedford was doing. Bedford had a little bit, it was in, it was in full bloom, so to speak. They had a, they had a classroom where they kept everything. There was a para there that sort of managed the classroom. Any science materials needed by science teachers or even, you know, sort of elementary teachers, they would go to this resource and they would get all the materials they needed. If they didn't have them, they would talk to this person, they'd do the ordering and then they'd bring the materials back. So that was the original plan. Part of what we ran into in the beginning was finding a space to do something like this. And since we're a much larger district, then finding a way to, to get the materials out to all the various schools. We did find some space in Elm Street up on the third floor. It was a storage area. We cleared it out, painted it, put in shelves, set up a computer and a phone. We're not going to man it on a full-time basis yet. The hope is that we'll sort of start it next year, next school year. And then we, we do plan on using one of the new rooms in the new middle school. So it'll be a little bit more fit for something like this. The NEF would like, Dr. McKinney has decided that to sort of manage the room in the beginning, it'll be the science coaches that will do that work. So they'll be the ones that will order all the equipment, get it all in there. We'll use some, some support within the Elm Street building to sort of get it all set up. But that, the hope is that each year, there'll be some sort of funding from NEF and then we can sort of expand this and turn it into more like the, like the Bedford model. It'll probably take a couple of years to do that. We, the district, said if we can get it to that level, then maybe we can staff it a few days a week with a person like a para or something like that. But until we get there, we're not sort of making any promises as far as that's concerned. But that's sort of what the goal is. NEF would like to sort of work to get sort of a sponsor, maybe a BAE or something like that, that would donate sort of money on an annual basis. So that's what sort of their plan is and then the funding would come to us. So, and to, if that were to happen, what I'd like to do is set up an account so that these funds would go into, into this one account. They'd be, the funding would come from the NEF donation each year and then we would appropriate the funds as part of, as part of the annual budget. So to set that new account up, I would like the suggested motion would be for the BOE to accept, accept and appropriate $35,000 into a grant activity with the funding source being the annual contribution. So that would, that would be the motion. And then we could move ahead with the accounting setup and hopefully this would be an annual, annual situation.
Ms. Brown, did you get the motion?
Yes, I did, thank you.
Okay.
And if I say it wrong, then let me know.
Well, it's right on the bottom of the memo. Look at the last.
All right, here we go. I move to accept and appropriate $35,000 into a grant activity with the funding source being the contribution from the NEF?
Yes.
Annual contribution? Did you want the word annual in there? That's what you said at the end?
Yes.
Annual contribution, annual.
Annual contribution for the NEF, from the NEF.
All right. Okay, Ms. Oden?
What is the annual contribution? It's not $35,000 a year, is it?
It might be.
Oh, wow.
It, it depends on, like I said, until the science coaches start making the purchases. A lot of the science materials used at the elementary level are disposable type things.
You have to replenish them.
Exactly, so that's it. And then, like, when, when we heard about Bedford, for example, they may have like a volcano kit. So the teacher might bring it in and say, here's how volcanoes work, and then they'd put something in. So then you wouldn't replace the whole kit, but you might have to replace the various chemicals that you use to create the volcano. That's sort of an example, I guess. So we want to make our science materials more robust than we currently have now and share them within the district, within the schools.
It's, it's a great gift from the NEF.
Yes.
I can see where teachers, often in schools, you have a science closet, but it's very limited.
Yes.
So what a wonderful gift to all of our students and staff. Thank you, NEF. And I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
Okay. All right. Dottie?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
And Jessica votes yes. Motion passes unanimously. Perfect.
Thank you, NEF.
Now we're going on to Title I preschool and Brentwood move informational. Do we need to talk about that or did we already cover this?
Mr. Smith sort of jumped the gun on this, but basically we wanted to let the board know. And all the teachers and everyone's been informed at this point, but basically to save over $50,000 on Title I, we're moving them into Broad Street. We're moving the, there are six classrooms in Broad Street that are moving into the first floor of Franklin Street, which allows the Title I to move in. They don't have six, they have four rooms, I think. And also Brentwood, since the lease ends June 30th, they'll be ready to go. So Sean's marching orders have been make sure the third floor and the first floor are ready to go. You know, the special, the special ed group and the preschool group was really looking forward to having everyone there all at once. I sort of sensed that that was going to be a big ask because we want, we want to do a lot of the work ourselves internally and save money by doing that. But there's, there's only so many hands that we have in place. So I figured this might happen and, but we wanted to make, well, we had to make the Brentwood move, but we also wanted to make the Title I move. So this way we can do that and then maybe Christmas time or whenever Sean's guys are able to get everything done. And like you heard about was the, the outside towers is an extenuating thing, but. So we'll, we'll have them over there. It'll just be, it'll just take a little bit longer. But as I said, that's the savings between the Brentwood lease and the Title I lease is $225,000. So that's.
Okay, let me ask a question. So not this school year coming, the following school year is basically is when the egress is going in, not, not 2021, 2022? The egress is not going, it's going to be the following, '22, '23?
No, I think the hope is it would be '21, '22, right?
Yeah, so it's in design, as you saw. Hopefully, we get the final design sometime this summer after it's been approved by the state Fire Marshal, then the construction can begin. And then it's, it's up to when steel's available and when the Joint Special gives the okay to proceed.
Okay, so let me, let me.
I think it's going to be in the, in the coming year.
Okay, so let me, let me go back a little bit. So the design is being done right now without Joint Special School Building Committee, right? That's, they're not even handling this right now, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we're doing the design without them. We're probably going to move the students in without having the egress because they need to get in because chances are it's probably not going to be able to be built right now before the school year begins in September. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I think I'm missing something here. Sometimes my brain doesn't work and then it goes into full speed. So we're not, we're having the design done now without Joint Special School Building, but why do we need Joint Special again?
The actual construction, Dan said a little bit better than I did, it's very complex to actually construct it. Requires a lot of trades and a lot of skills. It's something that a construction manager or a general contractor can oversee. It's not something that I'm comfortable overseeing. And on top of that is all the additional work we have coming next summer. So it's, it's a project that I see lasting probably 18 months, the Joint Special too.
And don't we have, do they have a clerks of the works that's overseeing all that too?
No.
There's no clerks of the works?
No.
Don't we have that with? I thought we had to have one.
You don't have to have one, no.
You don't have to have one?
No. I mean, for the smaller projects, you have myself and Gary to overwatch things, plus we've had a construction manager. The two of those things provide enough.
Do we have one for the?
For the school project? No, we don't.
For the three, no. They made such a big deal when we were building this high school that we had to have one, and he was part of somebody. Didn't he pass away and we named the street after him or something?
Yes, that was Chuck Drooding. He passed away about halfway through the process.
God, I can't remember what he did 10 minutes ago, but this keeps coming back to me, you know?
Yeah, so Sean doesn't want to take that role on, because he's afraid that same thing may happen.
Okay, because I remember back then, it was such a big deal, the clerks of the works, so you couldn't have just a construction manager, you had to have the clerks of the works. So I guess I'm a little confused, but I guess I'm a little bit confused of this too. Okay, thank you.
Actually, I have a question. Can I have a question also?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So, and actually, I think I may have been confused by this motion as well, earlier. So we're saying all future construction projects for Franklin Street will be managed by the JSSBC, or just this one for the egress, the fire marshal code?
Basically, the work I'm doing this summer to get the school ready for the fall semester, I'll continue to do. Everything else, we turn over to joint special. So that includes the two emergency egress towers and the subsequent HVAC work, abatement, electrical work, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Because all the, all the HVAC projects we've done have gone through JSSBC. They're fairly significant projects. They've all been, we've done a lot of HVAC jobs in the last 10 years or so, 11 years.
I don't, I don't recall if we talked about it, but we think that at least the HVAC portion of that project at Franklin Street can probably be funded with Esser funds.
Yes.
And I do agree. I think, I think that a project, this related to safety and scope, it's important to have a construction contractor, a major contractor handling it, that makes sense. So, is the intent beyond those kind of things like the HVAC and the abatements, and then this kind of large-scale projects? At what point would the funding and also the projects being managed at Franklin Street come back under the district control or supervision?
I'd say we have to define the scope of work for the joint special. We'll do that with them. But again, we're going to get the school ready for the fall. We will continue to work perhaps into the fall to get the second floor ready. I'm hopeful we'll actually have that ready as well. But those egress towers will not be ready. That will be a part of the job of the joint special. Then all the fall-on work would be joint special, and that primarily is the HVAC, electrical, and the abatement work. Once all that work's done, then it just falls back to my department, like any other school project would. Like, we finished Sunset Heights, now it's, now it's all mine.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I want to go back to something again. So the egress will not be ready for September, right?
Yes.
Is the fire marshal going to let the students get into the school without that egress?
Yes.
Yes.
Why is he going to let them go into the school without the egress?
The issue is that the preschool students can be on the first and second floor in classrooms. And you can have the, sorry. You can have first and, yeah. You can have preschool students on the first and second floor in classrooms. But then you have the Brentwood students on the third floor. He does not want to have a situation where you have an emergency and you have high school students running down either the stairwells and running over preschool students that are coming from the second floor. So that's why we can't have classrooms on the second floor.
But the first floor, the students don't need to go in the stairwells, they just go out the door.
The door, right.
So there's no egress issue.
So we're going to have enough room for just first-floor students, and we're not using classrooms on the second floor?
Well, teachers will be up there, OTPT services can be up there. You just can't have a full classroom of students. But you can still use the space. And then, when the fire escape slash towers are done, we can move more classrooms there. That's the plan.
Okay. And with the funding, when it goes to joint special, are we giving the money to the joint special for our little project? Is that how it's going to work? Or is this going to just roll into theirs, and at the end, they're going to give us a bill? How's that going to work?
The funding will be, will be, you know, there, there are some funding sources, and that will be discussed at the JSSBC. They, at this point, JSSBC doesn't have any funding. We would have to provide the funding. Now, the big question is, what is the cost? Mr. Smith's been very good at talking about a potential significant cost for these towers, okay? For a number, number of different reasons, cost of steel, et cetera. Until we have that number, it's hard to.
Okay.
To define that.
Thank you. Okay, were you all done with this subject? Oh, no? Mrs. Oden?
I'm sorry, I just have one question. I know the state used to have building aid. Has that completely evaporated?
Uh, no, it, it did. They've been paying off. Building aid was always tied to the bonds, the length of the bond. So if you had a 15-year bond, they would pay you so much per year based on what your interest and your principal payments were, actually. So they're still paying that for the projects that were approved. And the last one that was approved was actually the HVAC project at Fairgrounds and Led Street. That was the last one that they paid for. So they, then they shut it down, there was no funding whatsoever. They just recently opened it up again, but they're doing it differently, where they're paying, they're ranking all the projects, and then they're paying, they're picking out, based on the rank, they then assign a certain amount of money, let's say $40 million. But if the top project needs all $40 million, they're going to pay that project right up front, and the ones below it don't get any money.
Nothing.
So we did go through that process. Mr. Smith did a, did a lot of work. We just recently went through, the very first time, the funding's going to start this summer. So we put in three proposals, one for Penachuck, one for Fairgrounds, and one for the new school. Fairgrounds, we had already done way too much construction, so that did not qualify. And then we, Penachuck was put in, that ended up 10 out of 12. So we're not getting any money for that. The new middle school was ranked fifth, I believe, out of 12. So if, if the state puts more funds towards it, some money might trickle down. Now, the thing about the new middle school is, we're not going to be, you know, we're going to start some of the work, but most of the work's going to maybe, so I don't know if you get a chance to go after it again with the same project. We don't know that. But at this point, I wouldn't count on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns, opinions? Okay. Now, we're going to go on to the FY '21 forecast.
Okay, so I, I passed out this large sheet tonight that I carried with me. This is the process I go through each spring. Many years, I'm struggling where I'm down to my last $1,000 or two. Last year was different because of the shutdown of the schools at COVID. This year, as you all know, the students were out more than they were in. It was a very, very different world. The budget was put together for a regular year, and we certainly didn't have a regular year. So basically, if we just sort of take a look at the salaries and wages piece, you'll notice what I've done is, through April, those are all actual costs for all these columns, for all the line items. Then I estimate May, June, and then a column called summer, and I'll talk about that in a second. So basically, that's, that's what I'll do. I'll base that on information that I have, and then it, it will flow through the whole process. So if you take a look, excuse me, at the summer for the wages, the $8,804, those are the summer payments to the teachers, okay? So those, the payments they receive in the summer are this school year, not next school year. So we have to put money aside for that. So that's what that is. That's for paychecks and for every single teacher. And then, the wages part-time, you see a 1.5 million there. What that is, is our, our food service special revenue fund, which this year, we continue to pay those staff, they continue to provide lunches, all the lunches were free, there was very little income. The federal government gave us some money, but we lost a lot of money, basically. My estimate is about that, 1.5 million dollars. So typically, in a regular year, I'd never have that much extra money. I happen to have it this year. But this is certainly something that we're going to have to look at as we move forward next year, because the federal government has already come out and said they, they're going to provide free lunches to all students next year also. So if that's in fact the case, if we can get the students back in, that doesn't mean you can't charge students for non, you know, for à la carte-type things that the students tend to like. So we can, we could still do that, but we've really got to take a good look at our food service plans for next year, which we'll be doing over the next month or two. We can't continue to run it the way we ran it this year, we just can't afford to do that.
For the food service, if the federal government is giving us lunches for all students for next year, is it still under the same thing where we have to still fill out the free and reduced forms and reduce, and to get that money?
That, that part of it is related to the state funding. So yes, they're, they're going to ask you to do it, but when they provide it for free, whether you do the form or not, because it's free to everyone, not just the people that fill out the form, then there's no, there's no impetus.
It won't be quite as devastating, hopefully.
Maybe not, but we shall see. The reality is, I think, the way, the model we have for our food service, unless we can have some à la carte sales, we can't have the same model we have now. We can't run the program the exact same way. You know, we have a lot of sort of management that coordinates things.
And is she, I'm sorry, I can't remember her name.
No, Dahlia's the director. And then there, below her, there's, there's these coordinators, and then there's the cooks, and then there's the.
And are they working on?
Assistants. So we've got sort of four levels. We may not be able to have a four-level structure if all the funding's simply coming from the federal government. They don't give you enough per lunch to cover that kind of a level. Now, prior to this, the way we ran it, we made money every single year. It was, it was a very profitable thing. So the thing is, students all coming back in the fall? I certainly hope so. Once you get all the students back in the building, then you can go and start selling some of the other items. So some student's going to say, well, I don't want the free lunch. You know, 58% of the students were buying lunch before, what's stopping them from buying lunch now? So I'm hoping that there'll be a return to some of more normal purchase. But we do need to sit down and, and sort of talk about that.
Mrs. Oden?
Thank you. I don't think at the elementary school, they sell anything à la carte.
Uh, probably not. At the, mostly, that's mostly at the high school and at the middle school.
Okay. Might it be worthwhile to think about them offering?
Yeah, I think we can, we can look at a lot of different, a lot of different things.
Okay. Thank you.
That's, yeah, that'll be in the plans. So, so basically, even when I put those numbers in, if you look at sort of the remaining column, you'll see that the wages full-time and the wages part-time, there's a $2 million positive and a $786 negative. That nets out to, you know, a 1.2 million or so excess in wages. That's the piece of the analysis I'm still working on. But off the top of my head, some of the areas where we've saved wages, lunch monitors. We weren't in the building, most of the lunch monitors didn't come to work most of the year. A lot of them had no interest in coming in during COVID anyway. So we saved money there, we saved money on crossing guards, because we weren't going to school, we saved money on paras. We have a lot fewer paras this year than we budgeted. So I'll, that's what I'm trying to do, is get a breakdown, like, how much did we save versus what we budgeted for teachers versus what we ended up paying for teachers? So I'm trying to break it out by union, so.
Did we end up paying a lot? I know we increased the, the pay for substitutes. Was that, was there a substantial increase in that line?
No, that's actually a little further down. If you look at the wages per diem, 51412, we'll end up with a savings in that account of $425,000. Now, the reason for that is that we budgeted 1.286, but we didn't, while we were remote, we didn't need subs. So even though we're paying them a lot more, they're only working for like three months. So that's.
Thank you.
That's the key to that. And obviously, we're saving money on overtime, because we didn't have any facility rentals, so we didn't pay all those overtime costs. That's the main reason. And we didn't have students in the schools for half the year, let's say, so there was no need for overtime. And the, the additional, excuse me, the additional hours, we saved $214,000. So basically, the net, the net of all the payroll savings is $1,469,000. And that includes the 1.5 million that I didn't expect, that I didn't budget for the food service staff. So basically, it was close to $3 million budget compared to actual, what I'm projecting to be actual. So there's, there's, that, you'll never see that in any given year unless someone does a real bad job budgeting. So, like I said, a very, very odd year. The next set of accounts, the fringe benefit accounts, other than the educational assistance, those are all city accounts, so whether they're over-budget or under-budget, the net all just goes back to the city, so we don't really need to discuss that. In the next set of accounts, the professional and technical services sort of speak to the two items. There's the legal services, which we're well over where we thought, if you look in that summer column, you'll see a $200,000. That is a set aside for something that may happen, and I'm not, I think the board has been told some of this, and it's, but it's, it's just kind of kicking around, so I put it in to just say, if something were to happen, a worst-case scenario were to happen, this is how we would fund that, okay? So that would obviously put that into negative. And we've had, you know, this has been the highest year of legal costs ever, so hopefully that's going to go away with the change in management. Contract services, there's an extra, right now, that looks like a pretty big surplus. It's mainly from two places, one of which is plan ops, but I think, after talking to Sean, that we're, end up going to, going to use a bunch of that. But there will be over $100,000 extra related to sort of our Medicare contractor, where we're, the Medicare money is coming in slower than we projected. The way it works is, students receive services, we send the information to the Medicare contractor, they bill the government, we get the money back, and then they get 8% of whatever we get. But we estimated $150,000 for that, and it's only about $35,000 so far this year. So the revenue's down, which is the bad thing, but on the cost side, we're in a better shape. That is improving, but that whole process has taken us well over a year. The, the state and the feds changed all the rules, so it's cost us some time and some money. Then the next property services, sort of the three areas there, electricity, heating, gas, and water, will have surpluses on all three of those counts. I'm projecting 230, 40, and 25. And that's mainly because we didn't have people in the buildings. We weren't using as much water, we didn't need as much heat. The, you know, the electric would have been higher, actually, to cover. And that's mainly because we didn't have people in the buildings. We weren't using as much water. We didn't need as much heat. The, you know, the electric would have been higher actually to cover the costs of the excess legal. Prior to this month, I took it out of the electric. So that's where that came from. So the net of all those is about 300,000 in savings from those. And then the next set of accounts, other services, when you look in the summer column for those other services, what I'm doing in the, in the top is I'm, we're expecting to get a credit on the telephone. If you noticed back in February, the telephone was real high. I put a minus 10. I'm expecting it to be higher than that. But that's more of a placeholder to make sure that it comes in for me. And then some of these smaller accounts, I put in costs because these smaller accounts, they're budgeted by the individual schools. The individual schools are not going to spend it on mileage or travel or conferences. But what they're going to do is they're going to transfer it to some other account. I don't know where, but somewhere, and then spend it on supplies or furniture or whatever the needs each individual school has. So that's, that's just to, to sort of work, work the spreadsheet, reduce the cost so it doesn't look like it's too high. And then you'll see where the other, sort of, at the bottom, the transportation services and the tuition out of district. So the transportation services is a total of 1.5 million dollars in surplus this year. That's simply because we didn't run the buses that frequently. And the tuition out of district is typically the one big negative. It's, it's a negative again this year. We knew it would be. I'm projecting a negative of about 800,000. Could be a little, little different than that, but that's, I think, a relatively comfortable number. So that's, that's something we've been dealing with for the last forever, it seems.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
It's kind of, it's kind of interesting. It seems like there's like a big highs and lows between what the payment is. Again, it's over a million in November and then again in April. Is that, different payments come out just different times of the year, or is?
That's, that's simply the processing. It's, it's interesting. These out of district schools, they provide services. Their billing is extremely lumpy. You would think that if you run a good business, you finish the month, you send your bill off, you start collecting your cash.
That price tag.
Yeah. They, these schools are amazing. They cost all kinds of money, but they're, some of them are good. And other, sometimes they'll send you a bill, and then sometimes they don't send you the bill until a month later. I, I don't truly understand it, but. So yes, I, that is very lumpy, you know? But we do have, for that account, we do have a separate spreadsheet by student that we use to, to work, and we review it every month with the special ed department, so.
Okay.
Because when I saw this one, the 1143 in April, I'm like, wait a minute, what's going on here? But if you look back at March, it's 289. Put the two together and thus I'm estimating. Okay, supplies and materials, a lot of smaller accounts I'm projecting. There's going to be about 127 left. Don't really know. That might be a little higher, might be a little lower. But in the scheme of things, it's probably not going to really matter. The indirect costs, that's the money we get back for managing the grants. We'll have an extra $40,000 there. One other thing, I, the, the equipment accounts, it shows we're going to have an extra 155. I don't think that's going to be the case. I just needed, I didn't get a chance to get in touch with two, two people, one being IT to go through. So I'm showing 155. That might be a lot closer to 55, so that might be a $100,000 swing. And then on the bottom there, you see the budget adjustments. We're going to get $253,000 less in revenue. Now those, the two revenue accounts that offset our costs there are the athletic fees and the facility rentals. We're getting nothing in facility rental. And the athletic fees are obviously much lower than we would typically get. I think we had budgeted 140,000 or, or so for the facility fees. We'll get zero. And I think sports fees, we budgeted about 180, and I think we'll get about half that. But I'll have that number probably by next month. So basically, running all these projections, if you look just above that little box on the back there, it shows 3,102, which is what will be left at the end of the budget year. You got to back out all the FICA pension benefits, the city pieces, and that's showing a surplus of 2,742. So that's, like I said, I've never seen any kind of number like that. It's just because of the year that we had. Now, the other interesting thing is, we have all this CARES money, you know? We got 2 million of SPSRF. We got 3.2 million of CARES I. We have 12.9 million of CARES II. We have another big, many millions of dollars in CARES III coming. So working on trying to manage all this. The thing with the, those CARES funds is they're very specific about what you can spend them on. And I'm trying to be smart to work with the right people and, and do the right things for the, the city as a whole, that we spend the money in a good way that might help us in future years. It's not going to help you in, in this year. It may not, it might help in next year, but. So if the board has any ideas, if there's specific things, I did speak to Mr. Smith and said, if you recall last year, we, we spent about 600,000 on, we paid off the Smart Start Electric, and there's one left. So I still, at Main Dunstable, I said, Sean, go get that. I'd like to pay that off with this excess. Other than that, I don't have tons of needs within the district that I know about. I'm, I'm speaking to people. And if there is a significant need, there will be funds available. But with the increases at the city level from the state as far as pension and other things, I think sort of letting it revert back to the city isn't necessarily a bad thing this year. Now, I know people feel differently on that, but that's just kind of my opinion. So like I said, I've spoken with Garth and, and other leaders and said, okay, are there any real issues? The reality is, with all this CARES money coming in, a lot of the problems that COVID have created, they're giving us money to cover all those costs. So I don't want to be a glutton, I guess is the way of saying it.
Question I have. I understand about this money going back. If we don't use it, we lose it anyway? Is that what's basically?
Well, this money would go back and work, the city would then, it could work towards reducing the tax rate?
Never happened, never happened. He's got too many projects. He wants a dog park downtown, too. I mean, he looks only ways to spend, not to reduce. With that said, I'm just kind of asking this. Believe me, I'd like to see my taxes go down. Because is there any projects that we had? Because this year, we're going to lose money from the state probably. Because if, let's say hypothetically, our student count goes down, he's crying that we're going to lose money, the mayor. I mean, he doesn't understand, we, the school district's going to lose it. Not him, the city, is going to lose it. He's crying in the wrong place. We lose it here, and he's so worried about it.
Well, but it's all combined.
It's all combined because it goes into the city coffe. It goes into the general fund, and then we just give out the pieces if people don't understand it. Then the, the school district is the, almost, is the biggest hunk of the, the city budget.
Yes.
So, so if we give this back to him, is there, and I'm, what I'm really worried about, I want to make sure before we hand anything back to him, because he likes to spend on wrong things, in my opinion, is that I want to make sure that we don't have a deficit here if that, where, if our enrollment is down. And he starts crying, well, the school district doesn't have money because the enrollment is down, but we gave you back the money to take care of the city end of it. And so I just don't want to hear the whining on this. So I just want to make sure that we're covered here before we give our money back to him. I know with the pensions, I think it's horrible with the pensions. And in my opinion, people should pay more on their pension rather than the taxpayers. But that's a contractual thing. So there's nothing we can do about unless it's in a contract. But, you know, with that said, I, I'm, that's how I feel. I just don't want to get short at, at the last minute where we don't have enough to make sure that we meet ends. Hopefully, with the CARES Act money, might cover some of the other issues that we might have, that this money can go back, you know, like when any maintenance, because when, last year before this nightmare started, we sat around and listened to the budget, and we listened to Mr. Smith talking about maintenance and how we couldn't take care of maintenance for a long time. So maybe some of this CARES Act money might take care of those, those little maintenance issues that have been put on the back burner, nothing, the huge major, but the items that have to be fixed that's been, haven't been done. So that's what I'm concerned about.
Well, I think the CARES will cover things with COVID, really, like HVAC things.
Okay.
It will cover that. And then it's an extent of what else will it cover? If you need to put up walls to make the HVAC system work correctly, will it cover that? We don't know that yet. But we do know that it'll cover the HVAC. We do know if we wanted to fix the traffic problem at Bicentennial, that could probably be done with CARES Act based on all the information they've told us. So some of these projects that we have not done for various reasons, CARES Act will cover that. Will they cover a little small deferred maintenance items? No, probably not unless it's related to COVID. So, you know, some of this mon, if Mr., if Mr. Smith had a project that he needed to get done, then yeah, we could use some of, some of this money for that. But this is such a big number, there's no way in the world he's going to be able to spend it all that quickly.
I don't know. He kind of feels like he could spend it all that quick.
Well, I mean, one of the things that can be part of the discussion as we move forward is what we talked about early, the towers and stuff. So maybe there's, I haven't really talked to the powers to be around this, but there's some, there's some flexibility.
Okay. Something else I was going to ask, and I forgot, but this. Okay. I, again, I just want to make sure we let this money go, that nothing, oh. Do you have any idea when we might be getting an, an idea? How many students will be coming back? Have we sat down? Do you know, any surveys have gone? That's a good question in curriculum. When are we going to be sending out surveys? Because when do we, when does this money go back to the city if we have to let it go?
July 1st.
July 1st. So we should be getting an idea.
Well, I'm not sure you're going to have much of an idea until the fall. I mean.
I got that. But are we going, whether or not we're going to be sending out another survey to parents about kids returning to school? Yes, Mrs. Oden?
I'm more concerned about students who need summer school. I think we're probably going to have a lot more students that need summer school. And couldn't we use some of this money for that?
Not this money, because this money goes away before summer school starts. If we want to add additional summer programming because of learning loss, remote learning issues, things like that, CARES Act will cover that. So.
Okay.
CARES Act will cover many of our needs. I think we're working internally to do a needs assessment, working with each of the schools to say, okay, what, what are the students going to need? If we need more staff, let's say, to bring the learning loss back, then we can use CARES Act money for that. So as far as fixing things next year and the year after, there's plenty of money in, in CARES Act to cover those learning loss, emotional issues, things like that.
Okay.
So.
I, I, because I think that's going to be needed.
I, I agree.
Absolutely, and especially the emotional. I mean, some of these kids have, it's just been really hard on a lot of people. But some of these kids that have missed school for a year, that's going to be tough on them. And it is tough on them, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think our challenge with those will be finding enough staff slash services to, to, we have the funding. We probably have students that need the services. Can we find enough staff to do it? That, that'll be interesting.
Okay, so are we all set with this? Do you need a motion for us to accept this?
No.
Or is this just for informational purposes?
Yeah, it's sort of the, I think, like the financial report. You just, I don't know, if you place on file or whatever.
Yeah, do we need to go where we just went over that forecast?
Yeah, I'm suggesting, yeah, we don't.
We don't do this.
Financial report, because we just did basically the same thing.
Okay.
It'll just run through.
I move to accept the financial report for April 2021.
I'll second it.
Dottie?
Yes.
Yes. And Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and now we have our last report, and that's the transfer report.
Okay, so the transfers during the month of April, I'll run through them quick. First one, plan operations, moving money from their janitorial supplies into equipment and repairs and maintenance. And that, that's just a, a way that they had, they had a lot of the supplies. They used up earlier in the year. Now it's, they're going to use it for, for equipment and repairing the existing equipment because of the heavier use this year. Broad Street, as you can see, they have a lot of accounts where they didn't spend their money. This is sort of the year-end spend down at all the schools that I was speaking about earlier. So they're moving it out of all these various accounts that they didn't spend, and they're putting it into computers. Now, the reality is, most of this cost, we covered with CARES Act for the computers. So now they're going to make, they can spend it on furniture or something different. But they did make the entry prior to us getting that approved. Okay, the business office, you'll see, I took 110,000 out of electric, moved 100 into legal to cover the recent legal agreement. And the other 10,000, we moved into, that's covering the superintendent search contract or part of it. Next one, National High School North, simply moving funds from supplies to furniture. It's, it's the CTE part of the high school. National North again, they're purchasing, it's a software called NearPod. Don't know a lot about it personally, but they're taking the money out of rentals. They had some extra money, I think, in the pool rental, and they're putting it to, to purchase that software. The next one is also North, and this is just a temporary thing. The students, I guess, voted to purchase two bike racks. And then there's a student activity fund account that's going to replace the money back here. So this is just the students, this ACT group. Not familiar with it, but they're buying a couple of racks for the, bike racks for the, for the school. Next one is a transfer from North from the, the music group, the music department. They didn't, didn't transport anybody this year because they didn't go to any of the events they typically do, and they moved it into equipment so that they could purchase more musical equipment for the students. Next one is, okay, part of the, when I talked about the, the, when we pay for Brentwood, we pay a monthly amount. And then there's a thing called a common area maintenance or a CAM charge. So you pay, you pay that at the end of the year. So that's, that's 17,000. Cover that. National High School North, another one, to replace old chairs and put in new ones in the media center. And actually, the, the next entry is for the same thing. So they're taking some of their funds granted and using it for furniture, which is, I think, a good idea.
Can I ask a question? Didn't we just buy them chairs, North and South?
We bought them student chairs. These are for sort of conference rooms and, and the media center.
Okay, thank you.
As you think about it, the furniture in this place is 20, 20 years old now, so. High school students don't tend to be the easiest on furniture either. Okay, so then the Broad Street, I talked earlier about how they moved it to computers. Then they're taking it out of computers and they're moving it back to buy supplies and things. So that, that was sort of a, those entries probably should have been together. Bicentennial is, didn't need all the paper they had in the budget, so they're putting it into supplies. There's another. There's another one for Bicentennial. They're going to purchase some new walkie-talkies with their extra money that they didn't need in computer account. And this one, the Assistant Superintendent Office, there was a software that they didn't budget when they did the original budget. They ended up using the software for half the year. Now they've moved on to a different one, but they had to pay the cost of the software that they used. I don't know exactly what the software does. I just know that this is the last payment we're going to be making to this firm. It's called demonstrated success. So that's what that entry is. And then the last one is another one from North, and that's to purchase new chairs for the security office. So those are the transfers. You see a lot of transfers this time of year. The amounts you see this time are probably higher than you'll see at the end of the year, but you, on a typical year, but you will see a lot of, a lot of activity in transfers. Any questions?
Any questions from anybody? No, we're good? Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the FY '21 April transfer report.
Second?
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. I think that's the end of our agenda. Is there anything else we need to discuss? Mr. Donovan, anything else you need to tell us?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second? All right, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown votes yes. They're adjourned at...
6:45.
45.